Check. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of December 14th, 2023. Before we begin the meeting, can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite, just as for all.
All right, just some general information. The Planning Commission meets the second and fourth Thursday of each month at 9:00 a.m. at 255 North Forbes Street in Lakeport, California. This meeting room is wheelchair accessible. A request for disability-related modifications or accommodations necessary to participate in the Planning Commission meeting should be made in writing to the Office Assistant Three, at least 48 persons to the meeting. Can we get a verification of legal notice?
Yes, everything has been properly noticed.
Thank you. And we do have a few items on our consent agenda, meetings from previous meetings.
Unless there's an objection, I move that we accept all of the issues on the consent agenda regarding two minutes.
I hate to do this again, but I wasn't in attendance at all of the meetings, so I can't approve them. But I think there might be three votes.
I would move then that we approve the minutes from April 13, 2023, Planning Commission hearing.
All in favor?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Did you get a second on that motion? Awesome, thank you.
Move further to approve minutes from June 8, 2023. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes.
And I move that the minutes from August 10, 2023, be approved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes.
And I move that we approve the minutes from October 26, 2023. It's a tour through the year. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And finally, I move that we approve the minutes from November 9, 2023. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. So we do have a public input. Any person may speak for three minutes about any subject of concern, provided that it is within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission and is not on today's agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing. Speakers are requested to legibly write your name and state your name at the podium for the record. So we do have that time if anybody does wish to speak. And we'll take a look in the Zoom room just.
No hands raised in the Zoom room.
All right, seeing there's no hands in the Zoom room and nobody here in chambers, we will move on to our first item. Item 6A, 905, Public Hearing, Consideration of Variance to Setbacks VR 23-01 and Initial Study IS 23-04 for the Hidden Valley Fire Station, a new 8,000-square-foot fire station. Applicant is Skiles &amp; Associates, located at 19237 Hartman Road, Hidden Valley Lake, APN 141-381-02.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We're setting up the PowerPoint. Yeah, this is one of the more exciting projects that I've worked on since I've been here.
Just a second, Eric. Can you hear him, Sam?
Yes, okay. Maybe just try to speak a little intuit, a little bit better. Thank you, Eric.
Yeah, I need the mouse. Okay, what we have here is a little unusual. It's not a minor use permit or a major use permit. It's a variance and an initial study to cover CEQA, and it's for a new fire station proposed for the Hidden Valley Lake facility. Here's the location. It's relatively close to the new grocery outlet in Hidden Valley Lake, just for some locational perspective. The lot is fairly narrow, and it's got a creek right directly behind it, which has an increased setback. The reason for the variance is twofold. First of all, the lot is only 100 feet wide. Actually, it's threefold. Secondly, there's a 30-foot setback to top of bank, which is literally on the property line, so that pushes the buildable area even tighter. And it's owned open space, which has greater setbacks than most other zones. Functionally speaking, the fire station needs to have a certain depth in order to accommodate the fire trucks, which tend to be over 30 feet long. Aerial photo, it shows the existing fire station, metal carport that's on the ground, and an old oak tree that's in fairly poor health that's going to have to be removed. There's a picture of the site plan. The building on the left is existing, and the building on the right is the new 8,000-square-foot fire station that's being proposed. Here's the existing fire station, and you can see it's fairly small. I believe it's 2,400 square feet. The metal carport would be removed, the tree would be removed, and the building site is actually what's left over on that property. Here's a picture of what the new fire station will look like, and it's fairly upscale. It's got a loft in the upper floor that's got a kitchen, and I believe it's got some bedrooms in it. So they'll be able to accommodate a lot more equipment and personnel. And the fire station actually serves areas outside of Lake County, which I didn't know. It's not really relevant to what we're looking at today, but I thought it was kind of interesting. It's a very valuable asset to the community. We have a fire protection plan. This plan here is actually within the fire protection plan. I didn't evaluate the fire protection plan per se, but I did confirm that this fire station is actually part of that. So it's an 8,000-square-foot fire station building. I mentioned the tree that's going to be removed. The existing fire station is too small for proper functioning. They're proposing four parking spaces, one and one ADA parking space. The property is previously developed with the Hidden Valley Lake Fire Station. Portion of the site previously used for parking. The existing oak tree is unhealthy and needs to be removed. The site is entirely in a floodplain, so they're going to have to engineer the footings. Seasonal drainage channels located behind the fire station, which led to the property being mapped as being within a floodplain. And again, the whole purpose of this project is to consider a variance to setbacks. So the zoning ordinance, the O-zone, the open space zone, does allow fire stations. We applied Article 41 Performance Standards, and it requires a variance which has three approval criteria that need to be met. Variance approval criteria is within Article 52. I mentioned Article 41 Performance. Article 24 is the open space zoning district. Complies with multiple sections of the general plan. It complies with the Middletown Area Plan, and it's a permitted use in the O-open space zoning district. CEQA, we evaluated CEQA. There were three categories that had some potential for impacts. Those included air quality, cultural tribal, and noise during construction primarily. We discounted the sirens. Those weren't evaluated within the CEQA evaluation. There were no public comments. So our recommendation is to adopt the initial study, IS 2304, with the findings within the staff report dated December 14, 2023, and to approve the variance VR 2301 with the findings and subject to the conditions listed within the staff report dated December 14, 2023. And I can answer any questions that you might have.
Eric, I have a couple of questions. First of all, I'm a very strong supporter of this important and necessary project. I live three minutes away from where the fire station is currently. And I do have a question about to the left of the new construction. I assume that one encroaches on the PO boxes that are there in the, to the left of the new building?
I'm going to let the applicant speak to that. As far as I know, there's no conflict at all.
I wouldn't think so. I just wanted to ask the question.
Yeah, hidden.
The left of that pickup truck, you can see the.
It's a different property where the mailboxes are located. It's actually in the pink.
Okay.
Yeah, please approach the podium and state your first and last name. I will be opening public input.
My name is Phil Skiles, Skiles &amp; Associates. I'm the applicant. The Hidden Valley Lake mailboxes have been relocated down further and away from the parcel, so they're not going to infringe upon the building at all.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question. If you're finished. You mentioned the variance for setbacks. What are the setbacks, and how much would this structure be infringing on it? And you said it was a seasonal drainage? It's not a blue-line stream?
That's my understanding, yeah, it's seasonal. It doesn't run year-round. Okay, so the setbacks are 30 on the front, 25 on the rear, 15 on the sides, and that does not include the 30-foot setback from top of bank. So essentially, they have a buildable area of 40 feet without variances. The fire station needs to be a lot deeper than that in order to accommodate the fire trucks, and they have to have room to bring the fire trucks onto the property.
Yeah, it seems like it's not the ideal location for it, but, so it looks to me like it's about halfway through the easement on this project site plan. Does that sound about right? It's a 30-foot setback from the top of bank, and it's encroaching in about 10 feet on that?
That sounds about right, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
I don't have the numbers memorized.
Yeah, I also had a question regarding the setbacks as well, but it was answered about the engineered footings that would be required, and so.
Due to the floodplain?
Yeah. So I was just curious as to, you know, how or what the plan was to make sure that the firehouse would be not affected by it encroaching on those setbacks, or if the setbacks were, would cause any damage or hazard to the firehouse if there was a flood or something like that.
Well, typically, they engineer buildings with flood vents. There's a certain elevation that equipment has to be placed at, electrical in particular, but other equipment inside of buildings that are within a floodplain, they require special anchoring to the ground so the buildings don't subside or, God forbid, float away, which is a pretty extreme case. But the applicants are very aware of the floodplain and the fact that they're going to have to do special engineering on it, and that's ordinarily reviewed during the building permit review phase. So it wouldn't necessarily occur now, but it's important for the commission to know that there is a floodplain, and they're going to have to work around it.
Thank you. So since public comment is still open, is there anybody in the public on Zoom that wishes to speak?
There are no hands raised.
All right, so I'm going to be closing public comment and bringing it back to the commission.
I don't have any questions or comments.
Mr. Chairman, prepared to offer a motion. I move that the Planning Commission adopt the initial study, IS 23-04, for Skiles &amp; Associates for the property located at 19237 Hartman Road, Hidden Valley Lake, APN 141-381-02, with the findings listed in the staff report dated December 14, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Planning Commission approve variance VR 23-01 for Skiles &amp; Associates for the property located at 19237 Hartman Road, Hidden Valley Lake, APN 141-381-02, based on the findings and subject to the conditions included in the staff report dated December 14, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Note, the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven-day calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the Planning Commission, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 p.m. on or before the seventh day following the Planning Commission's decision on this matter.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Eric.
All right, and moving on to our item 6B. This is a hearing consideration of proposed major use permit, UP 21-13, Lux California LLC, and mitigated negative declaration, IS 21-14, for permit approval of up to 44,000 square feet of outdoor commercial cannabis canopy located at 1209 Vernal Drive, Lakeport, APN 007-055-02.
Commissioners, if I might just take a moment, I'm sorry, I didn't think of it at the very beginning, but I'd like to introduce to you our new principal planner, Michelle Iris.
Hi.
We are very, very happy to have her join our team.
Welcome. Throw you in, you know.
Yeah.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Andrew.
Well, I was going to introduce myself. Hello? Okay, let's try that again. Okay, I think we're good now. So I'm Andrew Amalong, the Cannabis Program Manager. I'm going to be presenting UP 2113 today. It's a relatively straightforward proposal, and the applicant is here today with the presentation that they've prepared, and their consultant is available for questions and clarification as well. Our agenda today will cover the permit request, the project scope, site description, the project analysis. Oh, hold on one second. I think we have one. I don't think our PowerPoint is sharing properly on the Zoom room, so bear with us for one second.
We're not much help.
Oh, here, let me borrow. Let's just close this for a second. Is that it? No, that's not it. Okay. Which one is it? Oh. No, that's not.
Yeah, those two. Bottom one is my presentation, top one is the applicant's presentation.
Okay. I tried to limit his screen time right now just because he's such a little young brain.
It may have been in conflict with the. Okay, it should now. Sure. F5. Now F5. Well, that's interesting. F5. There we go. Okay.
Okay, I think we are ready to go now. I'll go ahead on to the agenda and start over here. So today, we'll be going through the permit request, the project scope, the site description, the project analysis, some points of interest, cumulative impacts, and recommendations. So the applicant is seeking up to 44,000 square feet of commercial outdoor canopy in addition to a self-distribution license located at 1209 Vernal Drive in the Lakeport area, California. The project location is approximately five miles south of Lakeport and approximately five miles southwest of Kelseyville, and it is accessed via Ridge Road from Highland Springs Road. The general plan designation for the project parcel is rural lands, as well as the Bay zoning district, and it is part of the Kelseyville Community Area Plan. The project is currently undeveloped, and the surrounding parcels are also undeveloped. The parcel is situated on, or basically, the parcel is 42 acres located within the Donovan Valley. It is made up of rolling foothills and basically divides, rolling foothills of the Mayakma Mountains, I believe, how you pronounce it, and which divide Lake County and Mendocino County. The location is about 1.1 miles from Highland Creek, which is the closest major water course. The southwest portion of the parcel is open meadows, as you can see here, whereas the northern portion gets more densely vegetated with some forested areas. The project scope includes 600-square-foot hoop houses, 1,000-square-foot hoop houses, sorry, 40 1,000-square-foot hoop houses, two 3,000-square-foot plant propagation greenhouses, one 4,800-square-foot processing structure, two 320-square-foot shipping containers, one 120-foot, square-foot security structure, 12 5,000-gallon water tanks for irrigation and fire suppression, and one onsite septic system for processing structures. Now, to provide some clarification, because I think there might be some confusion with the project proposal itself, as I mentioned previously, this is a proposal for outdoor cultivation. The original application was for mixed-lake cultivation within greenhouses. However, in May of 2023, the county adopted Ordinance 3134, which was pretty much in response to changing state regulations, and it allowed for temporary hoops to be applied to outdoor cultivation. They're allowed for 180 days of the year. Like I said, they're temporary, and the hoops can be agriculturally exempt from building permits under certain guidelines, which are met with this project proposal. Ordinance 3135 was also recently approved in September of '23, and it allows for temporary processing structures for a limited period of time before a permanent processing structure is constructed, and these temporary processing structures do require building permits. So currently on the parcel, as mentioned, the project parcel is undeveloped. There is one onsite permitted groundwater well, as well as a dirt driveway. And also, as you can see there, you can see a power line going through. There's a utility easement on the parcel, which is why I chose that photo. In terms of the project analysis, we reviewed the Lake County General Plan, the Kelseyville Area Plan, the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, as well as state regulations. When reviewing the Lake County General Plan, policies in Chapter 3, Chapter 7, Chapter 8, and Chapter 11 were reviewed, and the project was found to be in no major conflict with any of these policies. The same is true for the Kelseyville Community Area Plan. Chapter 3, Chapter 4, and Chapter 5 were reviewed. In terms of Chapter 3, requirements for water use and limited incompatible agricultural uses were a focus of that review. For Chapter 4, on public safety, the project was reviewed for, you know, the requirements of 4290 and 4291, as well as setbacks from water courses. And for Chapter 5, land use policies, a review was conducted for the preservation of natural resources. For the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, Articles 7, Articles 27, Articles, well, Article 30 was covered as a combining district, however, it's not applicable to this project. So really, Articles 7, Article 27, and 37 were a focus of this project. Article 30 has some, basically, language and restrictions on lot size and density, but it really doesn't apply to a commercial cannabis project. The project underwent an initial study for CEQA analysis, where potential significant impacts were reviewed for aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural and tribal cultural resources, geology and soils, noise and wildfire, and the appropriate mitigation measures were prepared to ensure that no impacts would be significant. Some points of interest with this project, there will be quite a bit of grading proposed. It looks like, you know, I don't have the figure here. I believe it was about 13,000 cubic yards of soil to be moved. The applicants can clarify that a little bit further. And they've submitted the required, oh, here we go. Here's this information. So yes, it's 13,900 cubic yards of soil, and the applicants did submit grading plans prepared by Munsel Civil Engineering. The project will require a complex grading permit should you choose to approve the use permit. Another point of interest is tree removal. The project is proposing to remove three oak trees. A tree removal and a replacement plan was submitted. It was conducted by WRA Environmental Consultants on November 2021. The tree replacement would be at a three-to-one ratio with nine new oak trees being planted, I believe, to the north of the proposed project, but the applicants can provide more clarification on that. The photo here, I chose this photo because the development would go right up to the first tree you see towards the left. The tree towards the right, the legacy oak there, that's where they chose to stop development to preserve that tree. In terms of cumulative impacts, they're, oh, sorry, we're getting a little static on a speaker. Okay. Anyway, in terms of cumulative impacts, within one mile, there is one recently approved project and one pending project. Within three miles, there are nine approved projects and two pending projects. These figures changed because one of the pending projects was recently approved, and then a new application had submitted, so there might be some inconsistencies with what's stated in the staff report. But to kind of dive into more detail on that, within the immediate Donovan Valley area, there is the project that was approved in November, the most recent Planning Commission hearing. You may remember that project. That one was recently approved, and it was for 10 acres of outdoor cultivation, and it is just under a mile away from the project. It's over 5,000 feet. Another project in closer proximity is just over 5,000 feet. Essentially, it is two approved minor use permits, one for 10,000 square feet of outdoor, then they add a 2,500 square feet of indoor. Now they're making one further modification, and those three minor use permits are now constituting a pending major use permit, however, it's just recently submitted, so. There's also another pending project within the Donovan. So there's also another pending project within the Donovan Valley area. It would be the yellow dot to the southeast of the project parcel. However, that project description is still undergoing revisions, and our sequel analysis has not been completed for that one. Other projects within three miles include the BG Property Management, Stella Green Farms, and the Workright Processing Facility. One of those has not really been operating this past year. There's also two others that are facing potential expiration for inactivity. So a lot of the approved projects within that area have not actually begun development. With that said, staff's recommendation is that you adopt the initial study, IS 2114, for use permit 2113, with the findings found in the staff report, as well as approving use permit UP 2113 with the proposed conditions of approval. Oh, that does remind me, we did have a public comment. There were originally no public comments. I believe you have a green sheeted item. It came up last night. It was the same neighbor who's concerned with the project from last month. They, essentially, the subdivision, the Donovan Valley subdivision, has some of their own requirements, one of them primarily being public access throughout the properties. It was an issue for the previous project. This project doesn't really propose any gates on any of Vernal Drive or any of the driveways through the subdivision. So it wasn't a major issue, but should you wish to amend the conditions and add a condition that no gates be placed on the driveway, you may choose to do so.
Thank you, Andrew.
And that concludes the presentation. Available for questions and comments. And maybe before we dive into that, we could see the applicant's presentation? Okay. Let's go ahead and get that set up. So. I think they can.
Morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name's John Lake. I'm the owner-operator at Deluxe California. I currently live in Northern California. I've been a cannabis cultivator with the state license program since 2017 when it opened in Mendocino County. I've helped a few neighbors get their licenses and help them with their projects, and currently still run two operations in Willets right now. Looking forward to this project.
Did you, do we open the other PowerPoint? Is that it? Is it this one? All right, hang on. Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay. John, you can just go ahead and.
All right, no problem.
Let me know when you want to go to the next slide.
Sounds good. Thank you, Andrew. Yeah, so basically here, a site overview, like Andrew talked about, our PowerPoint's very similar to Andrew's, but I can, you know, answer some questions and dive into a little more specifics. Maybe we can go to the next one. Yeah, so our proposal here is to do 46 hoop houses. The reason we did hoop houses instead of the engineered greenhouses, you know, it's, economics have changed since the project's been set up, or was, since I applied, and we still want to move forward, but the hoop houses are much more feasible, and the impact for construction is much less. It says here, you'll see in our construction portion in the SEQA that it would take two to three months. More or less, the hoop houses can go up in a week's time after the grading's been completed. It is a bit much grading, but with the consultants that we've had work on this project, Muncil, there has been a soil report, geotechnical report done by TransTech, which is a very in-depth report. They did 13 test pits there to attest to the grading that we want to do, and it does comply for what they would approve to do 95% compaction for the finished project. As far as the processing building, we will be putting that up to do just local processing for the site there, drying and trimming. And the, you know, water tanks there are obviously for irrigation and fire protection as well. Yeah, overview of the site plan here, like I said before, it was going to be engineered greenhouses, but we went with the hoop houses here with that ordinance. We plan on having no mechanical devices inside of the hoop houses, no electrical, no lighting. It's strictly for light deprivation. If you're familiar with light deprivation, we pull a blackout tarp over the hoop in the evening, leave it on through the night. It tricks the plant to go to flower, and in this case, will flower twice a year. Our season will go from May 1st to Halloween, October 31st. In my project, when I first applied, things were different. We were going to operate year-round, and my water use was much more, my impact was much more. This is much more feasible, less impact, and actually accomplishable. It's a nice parcel here. I own a couple other parcels next to it. My neighbors are all great neighbors. I've taken the time to introduce myself to the neighbors, and a big part of any project I do, I want to know the neighbors. I want to, you know, help if I can with them as well. Pretty self-explanatory there.
Excuse me, if I could interrupt you for a minute, if you go back to the last slide? What's the proximity to, let's say, your closest neighbors, or are there any homes out there?
Yes, sir. It's not on the picture here, but if you see Stop Share, I'd say in that corner, yeah, go in, or maybe if it can zoom out, I don't know if it can. You can't see him here, Mr. Chair, but from that corner, bottom corner on the right there of the parcel, his house is probably 2,000 or 3,000 feet from there, Mr. Dennis Herzog, Doug and Dennis Herzog. The other closest neighbor would be the Y there on the left-hand side, bottom left, before you enter the property there. About 1,000 feet up from the property line is Val and Randy Putman. He used to be in the cannabis program, but is no longer in the program. As far as other homes, specific homes, there is nothing within that 2,000 or 3,000 feet.
Yeah, I just wanted to visualize that.
Yes.
It is pretty secluded in the.
Yeah, it's a, yeah, and the project site is, if you see that meadow there, the north end of the meadow is where the project site is. Correct, correct. It's a, you know, I've been told that, you know, with the size of the acreage of the property, you can grow more, you know, the ordinance allows for more, and for the impact and for what is, you know, achievable, that works for me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Or you want to say something?
Well, there are more slides. Richard Knoll, I'm John's consultant. Richard Knoll, consultant for Deluxe California. I don't know if we need to go through great detail here. I know you missed my PowerPoint, so wanted to make sure I had one this morning. But if we could just quickly go through the slides, this is just, if we could go back one, just a quick history on the original submittal, and then the revision to outdoor that was submitted. Next slide, please. This is just more description, a little more detail, but we can go to the next slide. This slide talks about access, compliance with the PRC 4290 road standards, and then that bottom paragraph just talks about the availability of services and facilities in the area. Next slide, please. That's a photo of the site, kind of standing right, sort of right in the middle of it, looking southwest. Next slide, please. This slide is actually a recap of an analysis that John has done with regard to water use. There was a hydrology report prepared by EBA Engineering, and it complies with the requirements of the county zoning ordinance, and it identified a projected water use of, I think, almost nine acre feet per year. It was actually done for the original project, the greenhouse project. John's analysis here, we think, is a much more real-world, accurate analysis, and is based on his project that he has in Willets. And this estimate is considerably less water projected at 3.12 acre feet per year. And so we wanted to make sure that, you know, you understood, the planning commission understood the, sort of, the high end at nine acre feet and the more realistic projection of 3.12. Next slide, please. This just talks about the SEQA process, and I don't think we need to look at this any further. Next slide, this is the recommendation that staff has made to the planning commission. And by the way, we thank staff for their assistance and help in getting to this point. We appreciate it. Next slide, please. And I believe this is our last slide, but we just want to thank the commission for your consideration, and we believe that there are some positive benefits that come from approval of cannabis projects, the business farm income, the generation of county tax revenues, employment opportunities, increased expenditure of disposable income within the community, all help to sort of help support the local economy. So again, we thank you for your time, and we're available to answer any questions.
Thank you for your presentation. I did have a question regarding the the processing building. How much are you expected to cultivate or, I guess, process in that building? Like, is it going to be, everything's going to be done at the same time, and then you moving everything into that processing? Or is it going to be spaced out because?
No, it'll be twice a year. So we'll harvest, the first harvest would be July 1st to July 15th, kind of depending on strains. In October 15th to 31st, I propose in my business plan right now that we'd harvest about 2,100 pounds per harvest. And those 2,100 pounds would be dried, you know, wet weight, it's about five times the amount, and then you put it in and lose five times its weight, and that would be the dry weight, I should say.
And is that building sufficient for that?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it's, I sized the building out for, you know, certain Title 24 codes, and also for space that I know that I use currently, and adjusted for the site.
Thank you.
I think it's going to be interesting to see about the water, because that aquifer is, it looks like it's completely separate from the rest of agriculture in Lake County, so.
Yeah. I was, I was, I was very intrigued when we drilled that well, the success we had.
It's how deep it is. It's interesting.
It is.
I had a couple of questions about your amendments. I know what composted chicken manure is, and so do all my neighbors. But what is Dr. Earth?
Dr. Earth is a, they offer four or three different blends, and it's a natural mixed amendment. For example, their Flower Girl is one of the names, and it's like 094.
Okay.
And then the one that we usually use all the time for amendments is their 444. It's an orange bag. Basically.
That's a lot of.
I know. We don't, we don't, in the light deprivation system, we use less of the 444 because we don't need as much nitro. But it's a great product. It's, you know, it's.
I just can't, it's amazing how much dirt you're moving. I think I saw 990 yards.
No, 13,900.
It was cubic feet, wasn't it?
Cubic yards.
Cubic yards.
Yeah. So it's cut and fill, no dirt is going to leave the site or have to be brought in.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're taking two little minor knolls and blending them into the flatter, not unintended. And buffering it to a flat site.
Okay, I was imagining the trucks.
No.
And then I had one other question. You mentioned liquid fertilizers. What are you using? What are the liquid fertilizers?
Actually, we've been using more compost teas these days. It's a little bit, it's more productive, it's less impact, it's more affordable. A lot of manure teas. Some of the liquid fertilizers we've used in the past, I think, was on there, was, might have been Cutting Edge. I don't really use that one much anymore. It's an organic liquid fertilizer, but things have kind of changed in my regimen since the two years or three years ago that I applied for here. More or less to have less impact and also to cut costs as well.
You guys really drove up the price of chicken manure. I know that.
I know, I know.
I'm an organic grower as well.
Awesome. Yeah, don't, make sure you wash your hands after that.
Yeah, it doesn't smell too good. So I had one other question. It was about the trees that you're removing. Your document states that you're going to remove three mature trees ranging in size from 10 to 36 inches.
Yes, ma'am.
How big are they?
So the 10-inch one is small. He's only, it's only about 20, 20 feet tall, and, you know, 10 inches wide. The 36 DBH is approximately 35 to 40 feet tall, and it is the biggest tree that's, that we're taking on the site. I have my arborist here on Zoom if you, you know, would like to speak. We are saving the major, the most beautiful tree on the property. Unfortunately, two winters ago, it lost one of its biggest limbs, but we're planning on not touching it. It's a very, very beautiful tree. In this case, there is a lot of vegetation outside of my project site, and we plan on not disturbing the rest of the site and leaving it as is.
Awesome. Thank you. That's all my questions.
You're welcome.
I have a few questions for the applicant and then staff as well. So one of my main concerns is with the amount of soil that's being moved. I'm looking at the report here, and it says that Wolf Creek Archaeology provided a survey October 18th of 2020. One of the concerns I have is, has the site project and the actual layout changed since the time of that cultural resource survey? And what were the conditions? Because in the picture, the ground is very limited. You can't see much from the picture that was shared by staff. And so I'm interested in terms of how successful that investigation was, and did it tailor its investigation into the actual footprint of your project, where all your hoop houses are going to be, all the structures are going to be? That's one question. And the second question I have for you, did you by any chance require the archaeologist to file his cultural resource reports with the Northern Association Information Center, Chris?
With what?
Chris, it's the California Historical Resources Information System.
I'll pass that one to Richard.
Okay.
So your first question with respect to the original plan and original design, and was that the area that Dr. Parker studied? The answer is yes. The layout of the original plan, the footprint is, which included the greenhouses, is the same layer, same footprint that is now being used with the hoop houses. And so that was the basis, that project area was the basis of his report. That's the area that he studied, that he looked at. And he found no evidence of any existing cultural resources. We also did the consultation with Big Valley, Mr. Montez. He came out, we met him at the site. We concluded that process as well. With regard to the notification with Sonoma State University, that's something that staff, that's their responsibility. that's something that staff, that's their responsibility, and my understanding is that that process was completed and concluded.
Yes, we can verify that that has been completed.
So the contract with Wolf Creek Archaeology is with the county, not with the applicant?
Sorry, could you say that again?
The contract to do the investigation was done with the applicant or with the county?
Was submitted by the applicant.
Okay.
So.
Well, we, so that wasn't a requirement by the applicant to, in the contract, to require him to do that?
The way that.
Just asking for my underst.
Yeah, no, the way that the process unfolds is that as part of the application requirements that the county has, we are required to submit a cultural resources report by a qualified archaeologist, in this case, Dr. Parker. That is separate and distinct from the county's notification of the Northwest, can't remember the exact name, but at Sonoma State University. And they then go through their literature report and study and make recommendations back to the county. But that's all handled by the county as part of their process.
If I could just add to that a little, we have, I have been operating under the understanding that it's required to submit those cultural resource studies to Sonoma State. So I'm going to follow up on that to make sure that that is the case, because we've never encountered a situation where we either have to make it as a condition or we have to require it from the applicant. So we'll look into that.
I would appreciate it, and not to lay this on the applicant, but I've known in the past that archaeologists have not been filing that information with the Northwest Information Center. And so every time we have a project that says there's no sites in the area, it always concerns me, it raises a flag for me that, okay, there's, I know of this wealth of cultural resources in Lake County, but then almost every project we have, there's no sites within the certain radius. I like the slide where we get to see the other cannabis projects within a certain area. I know we might not be able to do that for cultural resources to identify those specific site locations by name and number, but it would be good to know where those sites are. But if information's not getting there from the archaeologists, then there's an issue at hand. And so I've known of this happening. I followed up previously in my previous capacity and realized that this wasn't happening. So I wanted to ask that question to see where some of that is happening at. And so if you would follow up, I would appreciate it.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you. As part of our completeness review with any application, we do send a request for, or an inquiry over to Sonoma State, and they do send back a report of if they have previous studies on file and things like that. So, but I'll reach out to them, and we'll get a system that's going to be more comprehensive.
Yeah, I think it's gotten better, but historically, without all of the laws that are currently in place to support that information getting to the right place, I think there's been a kind of gap. And so that's one of the concerns. And you did answer my second question for staff in regards to Big Valley. But one of the questions I had for staff is, so I'm looking at the initial study, cultural resources, and so you marked the X in the less than significant with mitigation measures. And so without being able to review the cultural resource report, why is that marked versus no impact if there's going to be no impact according to the cultural resource study?
Well, let me, let me go ahead and pull up our cultural resource mitigation measures. Generally, we keep the archaeological reports and cultural resource assessments confidential. And in this sense, we have a mitigation measure, cultural resource mitigation measure. One, for an education program, to implement an education program to train all employees and contractors in recognizing potentially significant artifacts that may be discovered during ground disturbance, as well as cultural resource mitigation measure two. If cultural resources are discovered, ground disturbing and construction activities near the newly found cultural resource shall temporarily cease. A qualified archaeologist shall be contacted to evaluate the findings and recommend any mitigation, mitigating procedures if necessary. The local overseeing tribe shall be notified. If the cultural resource is determined to be significant, the applicant shall follow guidelines provided by a qualified archaeologist, which may include marking, excluding, and establishing a buffer around areas containing cultural resources to protect them from project development activities. Work may continue on other areas of the project site while evaluation and/or mitigation takes place.
Yeah, so my question is in regard, if you look at biological resources, A, B, and C, you have no impact listed on some of those categories. When you go down to cultural resources, if there's not a potential impact, then why are we not just marking no impact versus?
It's, it was marked as less than significant with the mitigation measures.
Okay. Yeah, I understand that part. So what I'm saying is that if it's that, then there's a concern. So if there's no concern, why are we saying there's no concern at all versus with the mitigation measures? And it might just be a technical.
You know, I'll let our new principal planner speak to that, so.
I was just going to chime in here and say, just from a higher level, the way that Sequa works, I'm sure you all are very familiar with it, but it's really what it's intended to do is look at these, I believe, 21 resource categories, and then identify if there is any potential for an impact to them, in this case, cultural resources. And then Sequa requires you to identify mitigation measures to try to offset that potential impact. So in this case, what this is saying, and the reason why it's checked less than significant with mitigation, is because we've identified that there's a potential to impact the resources due to ground disturbing activities, and we've identified the mitigation measures. And then with implementation of those mitigation measures, it's determined to be less than significant, saying, you know, in the event that unanticipated discoveries and all of the other mitigation measures that Andrew mentioned, you would mark no impact or less than significant impact in those checkboxes if there just wasn't even the potential for it. I don't know if that helps answer your question, but it's an information sharing and gathering.
Yeah, I think it creates a confusion when I'm reading.
Okay.
I'm reading what Dr. Parker is saying, that there's no historical cultural resources present, no sacred sites present. And then, so we're saying on one hand, there's nothing there, but here we're saying we need to have mitigation. So to me, that's saying that we don't know what's there. And that's what I'm trying to understand.
Maybe I can help.
The process.
I think it's, I think we, I think what they're saying is that we don't know there could still be something there, but we looked and we didn't see anything.
Correct.
Yeah, that's generally what we see. They go out there, and if there's evidence of something, it's identified. However, those are in confidential site plans and in confidential reports. We add mitigation measures accordingly. Even when they go out there and there are no signs, it doesn't guarantee that there's still not something there. So these mitigation measures are put in place just in case that happens, which is kind of just reiterating.
Yeah, that's my understanding, but it just, I've seen it, the initial study's a little different. So that's why I was asking today.
Okay. Sure. There's also, you know, on a similar note, not necessarily with cultural resources, but at times, we have seen mitigation measures go through that are basic requirements of the ordinance or requirements that apply anyway, and they aren't necessarily extra measures on top of what's already required. However, at times, it may be beneficial to highlight those requirements in the conditions of approval. For instance, in this case, in regard to the gates on the property, because that is a requirement of the subdivision. Should in the future someone else take over this project, they might not be aware of that requirement unless it's highlighted in those conditions of approval that they're taking over, so.
Thank you.
I guess my next question could go towards the applicant, or, and it's regarding the same issue, grading. Because I, I mean, I opened up here looking at a 3D, 2D model of the area that's going to be graded. There is a flatter, I mean, I haven't been there personally, but it looks like there's a flatter area down below. Was that an option, or what's the, I guess, the advantage of having, going into the hill to do the grading up there?
Yes, Mr. Chair, John Lake, Deluxe, California. The lower flat there is a, there is a creek that comes through it. And so this is a wetland or a setback from the water. It's the reason that the location is where it is there.
Yeah, that's kind of what I figured, because of the water that would run down the mountain would kind of eventually make its way down there.
Correct.
So it would be the same thing, right where you guys are, where the grading is proposed? So, I mean, I'm assuming there's a drainage plan and?
Correct, correct. There's the drainage plan. The way that, kind of, the site is, the valley there, we're kind of on the very end of the foothill right here, and the last big drainage is, you remember that legacy oak tree that we're not touching? It's going to be on the north side of that. So the major drainages are all to the north and the west of the site.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
It would be really nice in the future to see 3D of the, I didn't realize that they were doing grading. I thought they were bringing all this dirt in with trucks. But it would be really useful, because this is really going to change the look of the place. And there is a concern also with the soils, you know, there's a lot of asbestos in the.
Yeah, we did note that the parcel does contain some serpentine soils. However, their geology report, they did a soil study, and in that location, it was not found that there would be some. There's just a little to the northeast of the project site in the footprint. There are some serpentine soils.
All right. Do we have any more questions? So I will open public comment, just to see if anybody in the Zoom room wishes to speak.
There are currently no hands raised.
And then one last look around in chambers, if anybody wishes to speak or has any questions. Seeing no hands in chambers, I'll bring it back to the commission and close public comment.
I would just like to address the issue brought up on our green sheet. As I understand it, we don't need to do anything, because the road is a county road, and they don't have a right to block it anyway. Am I understanding this right? Yeah, I think, yeah.
You know, currently, they're not proposing any gates on any of the roadways, nor do they plan to. So you might be able to take it at that. There is, there is language in the subdivision that was created for Donovan Valley that provides the, basically, the access for all residents within the area. I don't, I'm not, I can't remember correctly. Again, I wasn't, Mary had presented that project. She's the expert on it. She's in jury duty at the moment. So, but I believe it was that access, all residents have access to all roads within that subdivision, and that no gate be put into place. There's also a public utility easement as well. On this property, the only public utility easement would be the power lines that run through the property, and PG&E did provide comments on those and some requirements. I relayed those to the applicant and their consultants, and they adjusted the site plans accordingly.
And didn't the public utility easement mean that the general public just couldn't show up and start walking around anywhere? It was just for the benefit of the Donovan Valley subdivision relevant?
The way the public utility easement applied to the previous project, it was not exactly the same perimeters. I know it was a much greater area. This was just a 15-foot easement on either side of the power lines, so.
Yeah, I just want the people who wrote in, Tom and Margot, to know that we heard them, and I don't feel that it's necessary, because they're not proposing to block the gates or to block the road in any way, so.
Okay. I'm familiar with the area out on Ridge Road in Vernal. I sold the actual project that was up last on this. So I think it's an ideal location. It's very, I mean, if you're going to do an outdoor cultivation operation, I think out there is just ideal. If nobody else has any comments, I'm prepared to make a motion. Okay. I move that the planning commission find that the potential impacts associated with this project can be mitigated to less than significant through the implementation of the mitigated negative declaration, IS 21-14, submitted by Deluxe California LLC for the property located at 1209 Vernal Drive, Lakeport. APN 007-055-02 will not have a significant effect on the environment, and that the planning commission adopt initial study, IS 21-14, with the findings listed in the staff report dated December 14th, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes.
In regards to major use permit, UP 20-32, I move that the planning commission find that the major use permit, UP 21-13, applied for by Deluxe California LLC on property located at 1209 Vernal Drive, Lakeport, does meet the requirements of Section 5.1.4 and Article 27 of the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and that the major use permit be granted based on the findings and subject to the conditions included in the staff report dated December 14th, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Note, the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven-day appeal period, seven calendar day appeal period. If there's a disagreement with the planning commission, an appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh day following the planning commission's decision on the matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to our next item, 6C. It's a public hearing, consideration of general plan of conformity, GPC 23-05, determination for the acquisition of property. The applicant is Kelseyville Senior, Inc., located at 5245 Third Street in Kelseyville. The APN is 024-083-06.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and planning commissioners. My name's Laura Hall, and I'm with the Community Development Department. Today, we're going to be reviewing a general.
Hold on, we can't hear you.
Oops.
Thank you, Sam.
There we go.
All right.
Can you hear me now?
Thank you, Laura. Yeah, that's a little bit better.
Thank you. Today, we're going to be reviewing a general plan of conformity, 2305, for the purchase of property by the County of Lake from the Kelseyville Seniors Incorporated. As required under Government Code 65402, before the county can purchase the property, it must first report to its planning commission on whether the proposed action is in conformity with its general plan. The property is located at 5245 Third Street in Kelseyville, and the assessor's parcel number is 02408306. Figure one in the staff report shows the site highlighted in blue. Following acquisition of the property, the County of Lake would then lease back the property to the Kelseyville Seniors Incorporated, and then send out a request for proposals to complete remodeling of the buildings and land. Actions at the site, activities at the site are permitted under use permit, UP 0214, which was modified in 2003 to add a kitchen under minor modification, MMU 0309. Please note that on page two of the staff report, there's reference to Sequa Exemption CE 2345, which was inadvertently left in the report. As shown on figure two of the staff report, the parcel has a general plan designation of medium-density residential, MDR, and a zoning designation of two-family residential, R2. It should be noted that the R2 zoning designation does not match our general plan, or, sorry, our GIS database, which shows a community commercial C2. However, staff has checked the Kelseyville area mylar maps and previous entitlements, which all agree with the R2 zoning. According to the conformity analysis starting on page six of the staff report, purchase of the property would conform with the Lake County General Plan, Chapter 3, Land Use, GOAL LU1, Policies LU13 and 14, as the MDR general plan designation allows for the Kelseyville Senior Center, which is an existing established use under use permit, UP 0214, that serves senior citizens in and around Kelseyville. The use was determined to be consistent with the Lake County General. The use was determined to be consistent with the Lake County General Plan under the original use permit. Purchase of the property would also conform with the general plan, Chapter 5, Public Facilities and Services, Goal PFS1, Policy PFS 1.1 and 1.2, as the Kelseyville Senior Center is an important asset to the senior citizens of Kelseyville. In addition, the site is located on Third Street in a centralized area near Main Street, which is a main thoroughfare. The facility and use are existing and all infrastructure is currently in place. Following purchase of the property, the facility would continue to be operated by the Kelseyville Seniors Incorporated, but it would become a public facility that offers public services to senior citizens of Kelseyville as allowed under the existing use permit. For the reasons described above, the proposed project would therefore conform to the Lake County General Plan. Purchase of the property would also be in conformance with the Lake County Municipal Zoning Ordinance, Article 11. As previously discussed, major use permit O2-14 was approved for the Kelseyville Seniors Incorporated on January 23rd, 2003. The surrounding parcels are zoned R2 and community commercial C2 and utilized for residential and commercial purposes. There would be no change in the uses permitted under the existing use permit, which was determined to be consistent with the Lake County Municipal Code at the time of approval. The acquisition of the property for continued operation of the facility would continue to comply with the Lake County Municipal Code zoning ordinance, zoning Article 11. For the reasons described above, the proposed project would therefore conform with the Lake County Municipal Code zoning ordinance, Article 11. And it should be noted that a correction in the staff report on page seven, under the response section, there is reference to Article 19 in two places that should read Article 11. Lastly, the purchase of the property would also conform to the Kelseyville Area Plan, Objective 5.18-8, Policy 5.1C-1, as the property will be purchased using grant funding. After purchase, the, the facility would continue to be operated by the Kelseyville Seniors Incorporated, but as mentioned previously, it would effectively become a public facility that offers public services to senior citizens in Kelseyville. The purchase also conforms to Objective 3.5.3, Policy 5.31B, as public services are currently provided to the developed site. Once owned by the county, a request for proposals would be sent out to third-party contractors to undertake the remodeling work, the remodeling work of the land and the structures. For this reason described above, the proposed project would also conform with the Kelseyville Area Plan. Now on to the SEQA, in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, an initial study negative declaration IS 0241 was prepared and approved with UP 0214 for the Kelseyville Seniors, uh, Incorporated. Future modifications to the building and the site may require review under SEQA. However, the details of such improvements won't be specific until the RFP is sent out for, and a contract is awarded. As such, the SEQA analysis of future improvements cannot be completed at this time. Per SEQA Guidelines, Section 15060, preliminary review, an activity is not subject to SEQA if the activity will not result in direct or reasonably foreseeable indirect physical change in the environment or if the activity is not defined as a project under 15378. Because the action before the planning commission is a general plan conformity determination for the acquisition of the property, it does not propose components that would result in reasonably foreseeable direct or indirect changes to the environment. Acquisition of the property does not qualify as a project under SEQA and is not subject to further review. Now for the sample motions for, for the environmental review, I move that the planning commission.
We'll take, uh, we'll take those. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. And that ends my presentation. The applicant is here to answer any question you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
I have a couple of questions. So does the lease limit, the, the, we, does this establish a lease with the senior center? And would the county be limited to leasing it to the senior center?
Stephen Carter, Assistant County Administrative Officer. So after the purchase, um, we actually have it on the board agenda for the 19th, the Board of Supervisors. The lease agreement is strictly with Kelseyville Seniors, Inc. And it is, I believe, a 10-year lease. And then the county within that lease agreement is required to meet with whoever is overseeing KSI at the time, at least 60 days before, to work out a new lease agreement. Meaning, we're not, the county's not able to just take it out from under them and change use? If that's what your question is. So we're going to stick with KSI and senior services until something changes.
Okay, so I, I guess what I'm asking is, um, does the grant funding limit it to, did you want to?
Just quickly to assist you in keeping the steps separated. Before you today is a general plan of conformity decision. You are not making a decision as to future activity the county has or may plan for the property once it's purchased. You are not being asked to make a decision related to any contracts the county may have related to the project or any contracts the county does have related to their obligations for the project in the future. You're determining whether or not, um, the county purchase is in conformance with the general plan. And so, um, your, anything that relates to the county's plans for this property, other than the fact that it's, it's proposed potential use would be in conformance with the general plan and the area plans, it would be a decision for a different body.
Okay, I, I get that, but what I'm trying to visualize is, yes, it looks like that would be compatible. A senior center currently in use as a senior center. But I'm wondering if what, what is planned could change. So.
As it relates to the decision you're having, that you are making today, pardon me, um, yes, in theory. But the county may also, the board may also have obligated itself.
Right.
Prior to deciding to purchase as to what it would, what it, its plans would be for the use of that property.
Right, so I'm just exploring that. I mean, does the grant funding require its use to be by seniors?
No.
Okay, I think that answers my question. Thanks. Because the nature of Kelseyville, uh, the population of Kelseyville is rapidly changing. As you know, there's a big project going in.
Right, uh, any, any, um, further activities? So, once the count, once you move past this, this decision, should you find it in conformance, it'll go back to the, the, um, the board and the board will make a determination at that end as to the purchase and, um, anything related to that purchase. So they could arguably have a contract with the current owner that's, that is a leaseback option or what have you. I don't, I haven't, I'm not advising the board on that, so I haven't seen those documents. But, um, um, any projects that may be proposed in the future for this particular piece of property would still be subject to California laws and, and the county's, um, general plan and area plans and requirements. So, uh, it, it would have to arguably be in conformance with all of that.
Great, thank you. If no one has any more comments, I'm ready to make a motion.
No comments.
I move that the planning commission find the analysis of consistency with the Lake County General Plan for the acquisition of land is not subject to SEQA under Section 15060 and 15378 of the state SEQA guidelines. Want me to read all the stuff in parentheses? Division 6 of Chapter 3 of Title 14 of the California Code of Regulations.
There's a few changes on the staff report or corrections?
Article 19 to Article 11.
Oh, as corrected.
Yeah, as amended here today.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
I move that the planning commission find that the acquisition of land as proposed by the Lake County Administration Office is in conformity with the Lake County General Plan. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. The applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there's a disagreement with the planning commission's, uh, recommendation, an appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh calendar day following the commission's final determination.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Laura.
Yeah.
All right, um, moving on to our.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Can we have a quick five-minute break?
Uh, sure. We will be back at 10:25.
Thank you very much.
Hello, welcome back. Uh, it is 10:30. Calling the meeting to order, uh, we're moving on to our last item. Item 6D. Uh, consideration of recommendations from the Cannabis Ordinance Task Force regarding zoning districts and permit types for various cannabis-related businesses.
Thank you. I'm Mariaa Turner, Director of Community Development. It's very exciting to bring to you today the, the first real batch of recommendations coming from the Cannabis Ordinance Task Force. It was formed over a year ago. It has eight members in it representing the cannabis industry, agriculture industry, our fire districts, and we do have a tribal representative there too. Today's item includes business types, cannabis-related business types, zoning districts in which they may conceivably be allowed, as well as types of permit levels that would be required for each of these business types. Some of these business types are new. We have not, uh, the board has not considered them before. Others are business types that are currently permitted, but the, the task force has additional locations to recommend where they might be allowed. And there are some changes in the permitting. Most notably, uh, which we'll get to in a little bit, was the, the retail. As the commission knows, um, a cannabis retail business is a use by right in, um, community commercial. And the task force did, uh, recommend a change to that one specifically, as well as a few others. We'll go ahead and get started. Uh, before we get started, I just want to give you a brief, um, review of the different permit types that we have, uh, for our land use development in community development. We have a ministerial permit type, which means that it does not have conditions attributed to it and it does not go before hearing. That's our zoning permit. And in a zoning permit, we have set guidelines, uh, requirements and regulations established in our ordinance. And if a person comes and applies for a zoning permit and so long as, uh, the, they have the different agency sign-offs that are required and their project description conforms to the guidelines that are the regulations established in the ordinance, we're able to go ahead and approve that, uh, permit without a hearing. You then get into discretionary permits, which are our minor and major use permits. And those go out for agency review for a period of two weeks. Where the different agencies and departments, state departments are reviewing those, review those projects and then send in either requests for information or recommendations for conditions to be added to the project. So once we're, once that project is deemed complete, uh, the planning department, uh, assembles all of the draft conditions, uh, as well as performs environmental analysis and brings it to either the planning commission or the zoning administrator for review and consideration. Those three are the permits that are before you as permit types recommended later in the staff report. There's also a long list of the different base zoning districts that were included in the, um, in the recommendations. I wanted to highlight some that were not included, and that is R1, R2, and R3. There are no recommendations, um, from the task force for any cannabis-related businesses in our residential zoned districts. Another one, um, another couple that, that, just to clear up any possible confusion, the U zoning district unclassified, this is kind of an, an old antiquated zoning district when, uh, harkening way back to like before we had any zoning districts. But the county, uh, has gone through and created zoning districts or assigned zoning districts for every parcel. So you won't see any U or unclassified zoning districts in the County of Lake. Additionally, we do have a zoning district designation MP, which is, uh, industrial park. We don't currently have any properties zoned industrial park, however, when the, uh, when the older cannabis-related, um, regulations were considered by the board, we were thinking, staff was thinking in the future, sort of envisioning like a cannabis hub, similar, so concentration, yeah, yeah, of different related businesses. And so MP is included in a number of those recommendations. Even though that hasn't happened yet, conceivably, it could be a type of development that takes place. So we'll go on, let's talk about new business types. Type 5, the large cannabis cultivation. This is a new license type available at the state. The recommendation is to add it to our, uh, nomenclature or our, our permit types available. It does not change the development or design standards or anything like that. It's actually more of, of a, just an identifier so that that title syncs with the state and there's less confusion when our permatees are working on their licenses at the state level. The type 5 is for over one acre. And as the commission, I know, is very aware, we have already been issuing permits for over an acre of canopy cultivation. And so in the future, what you would see if this was adopted by the board, you would see it called, uh, it, it would still be in our title and in our project description, cultivation of X acres of canopy, blah, 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 and the rest of the project. But it would also be called a type 5. And that, again, is just to minimize the confusion in communications between the local jurisdiction or county and the state and to sort of streamline, uh, the way, the path for our approved permatees to gain their state licenses.
I assume that's an outdoor.
It applies to all license type, uh, all three cultivation styles.
Is there a microphone?
It applies to all. Jennifer Smith, Cannabis Task Force. It applies to all license types, whether it's indoor greenhouse or outdoor.
So instead of saying like three type, or three, type 3, you know, licenses, you would just go?
One type 5.
Of X amount of?
Yes, but the project description would still be very clear about the canopy area, the cultivation area and all, um, accessories uses.
It's an administrative, um, only, uh, change in that we already allow for more than one acre on parcels. And so now it allows you at the state level to have just one license number rather than stacking, uh, smallers.
The next item is a shared manufacturing. So this is, this enables multiple permatees or licensees to do their manufacturing at the same location instead of being limited to one permit or license per location. So it's very similar to how we have certain community kitchens or, or commercial kitchens and it can be, uh, used by multiple cooks, chefs, um, for commercial use. This would be the exact same.
Would the permatees be required to have distribution licenses in order to converge on the same facility?
I don't know. Distribution, um, self-transport may still be something applicable, but it, this would not, uh.
The products will remain on-site and go through the normal distribution channels. It's not that some, uh, each individual participant could take their product home to their house.
So the objective would be so that we wouldn't have to build so many, uh, facilities to process.
Correct, and cost sharing amongst several permatees.
That makes sense.
I like vertical, vertical integration too. I mean, we grow it here, process it here.
Yeah.
Yes. The next type is retail delivery only. Currently, we offer the retail with a storefront. But this would specify a cannabis-related business that would not have a storefront. It would only, it would operate solely on delivery only.
Is that delivery only or does that also like include a brand or something else that they could, you know, manufacture and sell? It's just not? It's just not technically a storefront?
Well, the type 9 retail is only retail. It's a standalone. It could be added to other possible uses, so you would see that reflected in your project description and in the staff report. One option that this could be for retail delivery only is, and later on we talk about different locations, but it could be added to a, possibly a cultivation site, so that a tourist could come, view the site, order products that have gone through the same licensing channels, and then have those delivered to wherever they're staying.
So, excuse my ignorance on this, but if anybody is doing retail sales delivery only for anything else in Lake County, like, I don't know what, making handkerchiefs, do they, do we require a retail license for that?
This would be a cannabis retail license. Remember there was that one shop that I think that spices on Main Street in Kelseyville, but you couldn't go in, it was never open? They only did like mail order and stuff? Anyway, so, yeah, they would not require a retail license. Retail, this, this is a type 9 specific to cannabis.
Okay, thanks.
What about online sales? So since there's, since there's no storefront, they could still have their product for sale, retail for sale, but just not have a storefront, correct?
Yes, that is my understanding.
And then have their same product delivered if needed?
Correct.
Cool. Okay.
Okay. Next one. Type 10 retail with storefront and the new use onsite consumption. Onsite consumption does not require an additional license. It is, it is a use that the state defers to local jurisdictions connected to retail or special events. And the task force has recommended allowing onsite consumption to be added to type 10 retail with a minor use permit in planned development commercial, community commercial, and then the five zones where cultivation is allowed as an incidental use to a cultivation site. That's in APZ, the Ag Preserve Zone, agriculture, timber preserve zone, rural lands, and rural residential. And then incidental to an approved processing or manufacturing site in, in M1, which is light, light industrial, heavy industrial, industrial park, and service commercial, C3. So, going back, just to repeat, in planned development commercial and C2, community commercial, it could be standalone. But in these other zones, first where cultivation is allowed, it would have to be connected or incidental to a permitted cultivation site, or in the more heavy industrials areas, it would have to be connected and incidental to approved manufacturing or processing sites.
Would this be indoor and outdoor consumption onsite? I'm just wondering about odors, if people are allowed to smoke outside, like having a glass of wine outside?
The recommendations were not specific to indoor or outdoor. They could conceivably include both.
I understand these recommendations come from your group. Are there any members of law enforcement participating in this?
There are no members of law enforcement in the task force.
Thanks.
There are fire district representatives, though.
Wait, what, what's your concern with law enforcement?
Oh, I'm, I'm just concerned about what the effects on people driving. I think I've, I've heard a complaint from a friend who drives for a living about people driving stoned. I'm just wondering, I mean, I just don't know what law enforcement is seeing.
Well, I think they would be more involved once we get to the development standards on that.
Right. So, yeah, just to give you an overview of where we go from here after today's recommendations, this will go to the Board to, for their consideration in concept. It is not part of an ordinance right now, but we thought it would be, it would be most efficient for the task force in order to move forward if we took these different types of recommendations to the Board, see what the Board is willing to consider in the future, and then bring those back to the task force, the ones that, that come out the other side for then focusing on the development standards, specific to the ones that the Board is willing to consider in the future. And so, that will, so this will come back to, and then it'll get, it'll start getting into a draft ordinance, the design and development standards then. I'm not sure if it'll probably get moved into that ordinance and then consider it all, probably. But then, it will all, the draft ordinance will also go back to the Ag Advisory Board and back to this Planning Commission, and then to the Board of Supervisors for their consideration.
I don't necessarily object to outdoor consumption in this context, but would the, would the neighborhood, so to speak, just wake up one day and suddenly people are smoking outside? Or would there be a process by which the community would be aware of this next phase of?
Or onsite consumption, right? Yeah.
So that would be part of our development standards that would get, get vetted through multiple public hearings.
Also, Commissioners, if I may, all smoking laws in California do also apply to cannabis. So, where it would be illegal to smoke tobacco, it will be illegal to smoke cannabis.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. So if it is a, a business that is covered by California law...
Or schools or any type of...
Well, it's also prohibited within a thousand, smoking within like a thousand feet of schools and, and community centers and cares.
And that's a really good point.
Or entrances.
Just, I, I've seen this, I'm a member of the Pear Festival Organizing Committee, and we had to move the kids' play area this year because of that cannabis retail business there at the end of Main Street. It was very challenging, so, just...
Are you, are you happy that you guys moved it and got it away from?
No, the, everybody expected it to be down at that end of the street, and to redirect them to the county park, where there were a whole lot of homeless people, and there were a lot of, there were a lot of problems with it. It was just very problematic. There was no clear exit and entry way, so people couldn't really leave their children. It was just a big mess. So, if you just think about the implications of, of the zoning, that's just an example that, that came to mind.
There is currently no onsite consumption allowed in County of Lake. So, if there are instances where, where we are receiving complaints about retail with onsite consumption taking place, we do follow up immediately through code enforcement. Next is temporary cannabis special events. So, this would allow for a special event, a one-time, not, not an ongoing every day, but a one-time event with limited onsite consumption. There are already regulations in place that, that dictate where onsite consumption can take place in an event, who has access to it, things like that. And also, it, a separate license for an event coordinator of special events is required at the state as well, and there are regulations regarding who, restricting sales in special events to licensed and permitted retailers. The task force has recommended a wide array of zoning districts for special events to be taken place, to take place with a zoning permit, so that is a ministerial permit. Again, we would have our development standards part of the code, and special event permits would be issued in compliance with that code, similar to how we are already issuing special, special events for nonprofits. These are non-cannabis-related events, but it would go through the similar, similar purview. It gets sign-off by multiple agencies. We take a look at the duration of the event currently for non-cannabis. The Sheriff's Office and law enforcement has, has a review to make sure that any required emergency plans are in place. So, those sort of similar things, depending on the scope of the event, would be kind of what I would, I would foresee.
You do speak to one of the three issues raised in the green sheet we were waiting for, item number three. I don't know if you in the audience have seen that as well, from Holly Harris. She's talking about only zoning permits are needed for cannabis in this context, but for wine tasting and wineries, it's a different situation.
So wine tasting and wineries are not one-time events. Those are established incidental uses to the ag use at that property. The zoning permit for special events is the recommendation of the task force, however, the, a lot of the other uses, including retail, have, are, are not applicable to zoning permits. So they have all been recommended to have discretionary use permits assigned to them. Business types that are existing but in new locations. Type 4 nursery. We currently allow type 4 nursery in APZ, or Ag Preserve Zone, Ag Timber Preserve Zone, Rural Lands, and Rural Residential, as well as Suburban Reserve. And that is with a major use permit. The changes here would be to add the industrial zones with a minor use permit, and then the heavy commercial C3 zone with a major use permit. I don't see inquiring faces, I'm going to move to the next one. Processor. A processor is a permit type that allows for the processing of cannabis from multiple cannabis cultivators in one location. So if you have a cultivation license, you're also allowed to do processing of your own product. This is different. This is a processor where the product comes to them, and they do that, they're processing at their facility, similar to like a walnut dryer, or, you know, the wineries that do custom crush, things like that. Currently allowed in APZ, or Ag Preserve Zone, Ag Timber Preserve Zone, and Rural Lands. The task force recommends this, the addition of heavy commercial and the industrial zones with an approved minor use permit. Type 6, non-volatile manufacturing. Currently allowed with a major use permit in all of our cultivation zones, the Ag Preserve, Ag Timber Preserve, Rural Lands, and Rural Residential, as well as heavy commercial and the industrial zones, and planned development commercial.
Can you explain what non-volatile is versus volatile manufacturing?
Sure. Yeah, it's the use of manufacturing using non-volatile methods. They could include water, and I'm going to defer to Jennifer for the additional list and the separation of those different types of processes.
So the, the non-volatile would be bubble hash that's basically made in a spinning centrifuge, like a washing machine, rosin that is made through a press, any sort of manufacturing that doesn't include a volatile input like butane. So all of the inputs are non-flammable, so to speak? Yeah.
The recommendation of the task force is the addition of the, the industrial park as a possible use with a major use permit. Type 7 is the volatile manufacturing. It's currently allowed only in the heavy industrial, in M2. The recommendation is to add possible zoning districts of M1 and Industrial Park, also with a major use permit. Okay, thank you. Type 10 retail storefront. Again, as I mentioned before, it's currently allowed as a use-by-right, which means it requires no planning permit, though if there are tenant improvements to the structure or any significant facade improvements, that could trigger either a building permit or, or a planning permit for signage. And that is a use-by-right in community commercial. It can go into local commercial with a, an approved major use permit. The recommendation from the task force is to increase the number of zoning districts, but require a minor use permit for community commercial, resort commercial, highway commercial, planned development commercial, and then our agricultural cultivation districts, the Ag Preserve, Ag Timber Preserve, Rural Lands, and Rural Residential, if it is incidental to a cannabis cultivation site. So this is not standalone in these areas, it is, has to be tied to a permitted cultivation site. And then incidental to a permitted manufacturing or processing site in C3, heavy commercial, and all of our industrial zones. Again, those were all with minor use permits. The recommendation for, for C1, our local commercial and suburban reserve, where cultivation is also allowed, is to, is to allow these sites with approved major use permit. And in suburban reserve, it would be required to be incidental to a permitted cannabis cultivation site, not standalone. Distributor. Currently allowed with a major use permit in heavy commercial, our industrial zones, and planned development commercial. The recommendation reduces it to a minor use permit in certain, as an incidental use, actually, reduce is misleading. It recommends allowing with a minor use permit in the zones where cultivation is allowed.
So a major use permit was still required in C3, M1, and 2?
Yes. No changes to that are requested, are recommended. It just sort of opens up the areas where a distributor could locate. And then type 12, micro-business. Currently allowed with a major use permit in the areas where cultivation is permitted or allowed. The recommendation is to actually reduce that to a minor use permit so long as it is an approved, incidental use to an approved, oh, I did it again, sorry. The recommendation is to increase the number of zoning districts where it is allowed, assign it to a minor use permit so long as it's connected to an incident, or is an incidental use to a permitted cultivation site.
How do you define micro-business?
Ooh, good. Micro-business is a license type at this state that has four different options, and you have to pick three. One of them is retail, I haven't thought about this for a long time, jumping. But this is really interesting, because it's kind of like a mix-and-match sort of multi-use permit. Go ahead.
It allows for vertical integration of small, smaller companies. So it's less than 10,000 square feet of cultivation, retail, manufacturing, or distribution. You have to have three of the four. And they don't all have to be in the same municipality.
It's currently allowed with a major use permit in areas where cultivation is allowed. The recommendation is to increase the number of zoning districts where it would be allowed, require a minor use permit in local, or in community commercial, heavy commercial, and our industrial districts. Does anyone have any questions? Not, I'm going to move into changes in permit levels.
No questions.
All right, good. And I wanted to thank Michelle Iris. This has been, it's so many moving parts that it took me a while for it to really click and wrap my head around how I could get it to you in a digestible fashion, and, and Michelle's just like a master at these tables, so it, it really helped a lot. She took what I wrote and put it into something that I can tell...
It makes sense.
This is way better than what I had. Thank you.
Mine's quite important.
Yes. Yeah. So, changes in permit level. Type 3 distributor transport only. So, this, this is, well, it's kind of self-explanatory. The recommendation is to remove the use permit requirement, but to allow it as an incidental use in areas where, with approved cultivation, processing, or manufacturing. So, the reason, the reason why, actually, currently, as far as transport only, self, pretty much limited to the self-distribution license, which we'll get to next time, we have been, I have been approving these at a director level so long as it's connected to an existing permit, because being able to drive your product off your site or go pick up somebody's permit has no impact, no environmental impact that I could, could ascertain. And so, we allowed it as, as it has come up with approved permatees, we have just made note in the file that we're adding it to their project. But, but because, to come before the Planning Commission and say, "Well, we'd really like to allow this permatee to be able to transport their product to the distributor," didn't seem worth your time. So, so this is sort of just formalizing that, both for transport only, which is a business that consists of multiple vans or trucks or something going to a location, picking up the product and leaving that location, or the next one, which is the, the permatee being able to put their own product in their, in their vehicle and leave, and take it to another licensee or permit... licensee or permitted use. And so in both of those, the recommendation is to remove the use permit requirement and allow it only as an incidental use to existing cultivation, manufacturing and processing There are no changes recommended for the existing regulations on type one, type two and type three. So the specialty, the small and the medium cultivation. Also type N and P for manufacturing that allow like packaging, labeling, what's N? I forget N. Right? It doesn't, it's not something that starts with N. Anyway, it allows you to do that packaging, create the pre-rolls, you know, make your labels. No changes requested there or recommended there. And the testing laboratory also remains without any recommendations for amendment.
Is that MP laboratory?
MP, no, MP is industrial park. Laboratory is a different permit type. And boy, do we want them. That would be awesome.
It seems connected in my mind.
It would be very helpful, you know, if, in our county, which is so great for cultivation, to have, to sort of broaden out the types of uses that are allowed so we can retain our own product locally for as long as possible.
Yes.
But testing laboratories are really stringently regulated. And so far, we, we haven't had any inquiries to get them, but it'd be awesome.
It's the one standalone license that you can't have any other types of cannabis licenses if you are a testing lab.
Yeah.
They keep it really isolated.
Ah. Mm-hmm. The same as I said, packaging and labeling. Yeah, okay. The environmental review, again, this is a conceptual only project or item in front of you. Your recommendations would go to the board. They would then do their consideration and direct staff on what is to move forward, which would then go back for review resulting in an ordinance that would go through environmental review at that time. And our recommendation from staff is we are just really looking forward to whatever recommendations you would like to have added to the, the agenda item that does go before the board. The, the board takes your recommendations very seriously. And so I really look forward to a robust discussion and recommendations. And I didn't state it specifically, but these recommendations did go before the agriculture advisory board. And they, they had a, two meetings in which they discussed it. They didn't have any formal recommendations to, for changes on what is brought before you today.
What issues did they bring up?
They were talking about how they'd love to see staff use their time more wisely than work on cannabis policy. And that they were really, they, they didn't have any changes to recommend now, but they do look forward to seeing the ordinance in the future.
Well, we appreciate the time and the effort and all of the thought that goes on behind the scenes with the task force and bringing this to us. I think, you know, seeing things like the temporary cannabis special event permits and the retail storefronts and all of these, these other propositions or, you know, potential permits that we can actually expand with, I think are a really good idea. I can tell that you guys put a lot of thought into putting this before us. In the grand scheme of things, these are, this is just a way for you guys or for us to get this in front of the board of supervisors to make bigger changes. Most of these things, you know, do exist in other places other than, you know, Lake County. There's, there's places where they are really capitalizing on not only their retail sales, but their cultivation as well and keeping it vertically, vertically, vertically integrated. So very exciting to see that the thought and the, the, just the thought behind this and that you guys are really believing in the product and what it can bring to the county. Yeah, it's all exciting stuff. I don't know. I don't have any recommendations as of right now, just kind of trying to swallow what you guys have put in front of us. But, yeah.
Yeah, I've been reading this green sheet from Holly Harris and I, I agree, she said we request a comparison table at the end of item three in her, her note, and I think that's a really good idea. I, I keep thinking about law enforcement because they're the ones on the ground in the ditches, so to speak, in the trenches, I guess is the expression. And, and so I think it'd be really important to hear from, from them.
Is that for the consumption, onsite consumption or just in general?
Yeah, I mean, I know that the cops talk about when the bar is shut down at 2:00 AM, that's when things get busy. So my other concern is in other counties, we've seen real big dollar conflicts with agriculture. Vineyards, vineyard owners are worried about the equivalent of smoke taint with the odors, the volatile organic compounds and vice versa. The cannabis people are worried about the spray drift from, you know, other crops nearby. So I would just recommend that those be considered because we're largely an agricultural county and if we can prevent some of those conflicts through zoning and through use permits, that would be really great.
And zoning districts, kind of, is what you're saying?
Well, I think it's more about permitting. I'm not as familiar, obviously, as you are with all the different zones, but it just seems from an outside perspective that it would be really useful to consider how it's going to affect other businesses as it has been demonstrated in other counties where conflicts arise.
So if I understand correctly, your request is to add a comparison table for wineries and-
Yeah, that's what she's talking about. She says, "The staff report describes zoning permits as a ministerial permit which does not go through environmental review. If that is the case, why do wineries and wine tasting events have minor," I assume she means require minor and major use permits, yet cannabis would only require zoning permit? We request a comparison table. And I think she's right, that would be interesting to look at because I think we're dealing with, with things that affect people's thinking. Alcohol affects people's thinking, cannabis affects people's thinking. I'm not a doctor, I can't tell you exactly how, I don't know that much about it, but it's going to affect more than just the neighbors and, and wineries and wine tasting rooms. We've been grappling with that for a while now, so there'd be some interesting comparisons and contrasts.
So a use permit for a winery evaluates a number of possible impacts, stormwater, the, it's, it's actually a wine production site versus a special event, which is a one-time event in a location. There's no processing of cannabis, no distillation, nothing like that going on, doesn't have a bottling line for noise impacts. And, and the tasting room is allowed as an incidental use to a winery if it's going to be in the same location. Special events are also allowed as incidental use to an approved winery.
Right, so exactly what you're saying. If you could put that in a table so that we could read it and digest it, because this is just too much information. I mean, you know it, it's off the top of your head.
Okay, so that table, is it specific to zoning districts or do you want to see?
Well-
Because I can't really judge impacts yet, we haven't gone through development standards, so I wouldn't be able to add that. I could give you all the development standards you need for wineries or special events, particularly with noise impacts, with amplified noise, all of that stuff goes through discretionary review for a winery. However, we haven't done the development standards, so at this point I could, we could, if it be the consensus of the commission, we could add a table that shows zoning districts where they're allowed and use permit types.
If that's what Commissioner Fields would like, does that satisfy you?
Well, I think-
What you're needing?
I think we're getting closer to that, but what, what I think Holly, Holly is saying is that there needs to be some kind of parity between wine tasting and cannabis consumption details.
Additionally, onsite, maybe onsite consum, well, she's, she's talking about special events, which is the zoning permit, which is the one-timer, but additionally included in the recommendations is onsite consumption at an established retail. So, again, since I don't have development standards on those yet, we could definitely add a table that shows where a winery is allowed, as well as any special events and the permit types they require, but at this point, we wouldn't be able to speak to the board regarding development standards.
Right, so-
Regarding law enforcement, seems to me that's their job to figure out how to-
Right.
Deal with this additional layer-
Right.
Rather than ours.
When we made the recommendations from the Lake County Cannabis Alliance to the task force, we, we really did try and align similar uses between all industries, whether it be wine or other manufacturing. So we tried to keep like activities in the same zones. So we really didn't veer much from where tasting rooms or wineries were allowed. So we, I think that chart would be easy to create.
Yeah, I think that would be useful. And also it just helps people visualize it, imagine it. It's a known thing, but I do, but I do recognize that, I mean, wineries are completely different processing kind of deal, it's all about the water and the, thank you.
Certainly, so will it, we'll, we'll draft then, because I see pretty much consensus from the commission, we'll draft a table that shows where wineries with special events, their zoning district and permit level type, as well as the different recommendations for onsite consumption and special events, just so the board will have an overall view on that.
Well, I think these are great recommendations and, you know, we already have the cannabis here in Lake County, you know, farms and distribution and shops, so I think all these recommendations can really kind of tie everything together and make the whole system kind of work for cannabis. Recommendations, I don't have any new recommendations, so I just kind of, I do see that it is obviously for, it could bring a lot of business to all these, you know, already established cannabis farms. And I kind of view it the same way as, like, the same examples that are brought out today, that it's kind of like a wine tasting place that you just go to a farm and you have your, you know, special event or whatever it may be. So it's a, I see a lot of similarities there and just looking forward to see kind of, you know, how it will change Lake County and what it'll just bring to the, to the table.
And just to kind of echo off of Chair Chavez, cannabis tourism is a thing. People want to go and have the experience of going and checking out a pot farm and, you know, just to walk around and, and, you know, taste their product, do whatever. I think this is a great opportunity for Lake County to, you know, just to kind of get the groundwork started, to get involved with cannabis tourism and, you know, maybe having a big event for all of the local growers and, you know, things that can really highlight and just kind of put a different light on the industry that we've created here.
Well, and I agree with both of those comments, and it also integrates the community into the larger community in a way that hasn't yet been accomplished.
And I'll never forget when Autumn from Alchemy 29 came and it was definitely about, you know, keeping your product here and we want to supply jobs, we want to have, you know, be able to have onsite testing or, you know, have people bring their product in. That mindset, it's just very nice to see the same faces coming around and really following through with what they, what their vision is. So if this is something that we, that we need to do as a commission to kind of get it rolling and get the parameters set, I think we're on the right track.
And let me just add one thing, I, I think it's just wonderful to see members of this community participating in this.
Yeah.
Bringing their knowledge to the discussion, it's really helpful, thank you.
So other than that, I don't really have anything to add.
Great, then I look forward to hearing the public input.
Oh, yeah. That was a lot of work, congratulations.
Understatement.
All right, so we will open public input, see if anybody has any comments. We'll do chambers first.
Hello, this is Andrew, the cannabis program manager. I just wanted to provide some clarification, you had mentioned type N and type P licenses. Type N is for infusion and type P is more focused on packaging. So in that sense, with infusion would be more or less, from my understanding, maybe Jennifer can provide some more insight, like the preparation of edible products. So, and packaging would be packaging, labeling, everything that goes into making the safe, legally required packaging for the products. Furthermore, in terms of onsite consumption, whether it be in a permanently established retail location through a minor or major use permit or a cannabis event through a zoning permit, again, this is just opening up whether we want to allow that option. Should you guys choose to open up the possibility of that option? I've already discussed this with some of the, some of the people at the sheriff's department to come in and provide more insight, but right now, we don't want to go that far because you might just want to say, no, this is a rural county, we don't have the same infrastructure as an urban or metropolitan area, there's safety concerns with consumption. But before we dive into all of those details, let's just see if we should open it up. So that's all.
Thank you, Andrew.
Hi. Good morning, Sarah Bodnar. I'm the policy director for LCCA and also a consultant that works with local applicants. In my view, we're ending this year on a very high note, being here today discussing the work that's before you. This has been an enormous amount of work and thank you to the staff and all of the task force members who have volunteered their time to participate and, and also to you as commissioners on behalf of LCCA, thank you for your public service and happy holidays. I want to respond to a couple of things. This table is most awkward.
I don't understand all of it.
Beware. A couple of things that came up in today's discussion, like, you know, firstly, I think you all see the goal, which is vertical integration of the industry and being able to celebrate this part of our agriculture, agricultural heritage. And I think the commission understands it well, and just to underline that I think this zoning table reflects the ability to enable you new license types, close some gaps and hopefully close the gap between the farmer and the consumer in ways that are appropriate, whether that be a farm tour or, you know, a, an onsite consumption lounge somewhere or an occasional farmer's market that allows local cannabis farmers to show off their goods. So I think we, we've accomplished a lot that's really critical in this table and it reflects the work of, of many different community stakeholders coming together and talking square by square through the zoning table. So, you know, I just saw Holly's comments this morning and, and with respect to what she raised, I think the discussion was centered on and driven by what is needed for this local industry. This is not just an effort to bring us in alignment with the state so that we can check some boxes, it's about saying, where is this industry at now? When the initial ordinance was written, it was before the legal industry had really been born and it's before state regulations were created and then adopted and then amended and amended and amended and amended and amended. So here we are saying, okay, let's not just try to design policy for today, but for the next 10 years and update the zoning table. This is the very beginning, so the table goes forward and then, you know, after the board gives input, we have to go through the, the process of writing all the development standards, performance standards, which, which are going to address a lot of the site-specific concerns. And as you know, there's not a single thing in commercial cannabis where you wake up and it just happens, Commissioner Hess, you know, every single thing is going to be so rigorous. Then we're going to have to do environmental review because we will need an EIR for any changes to the zoning table. So this is going to be a journey and there's going to be a lot more times for input. I think that right now and looking at it, it's easy to lose sight of, of a couple of things, so I'll, I want to wrap up my comments by just some clarification. We can't compare apples to pineapples. You know, a temporary special event would be like, we're going to have a farmer's market and for one day, we're going to set up and, and the reason why it's not even the same as if you were to do that as a nonprofit, because I have a nonprofit and we do that and you have to go to, to the sheriff and you have to go to the ABC, on a, on top of all that, to host a cannabis temporary special event, you have to be a licensed event organizer through the state of California to apply for that before you can come to Moriah with your zoning permit application. So levels, there's lots of levels. I think that's not well-understood. And then also the onsite consumption piece, it's confusing because the state of California made it confusing. In order to allow consumption at all, you have to have a type 10 storefront retail license. So you have to be licensed as a full-blown dispensary if you even want to have a tasting room on your farm. And it's not really a tasting room because in the state of California, you can't taste anything until after you buy it.
Oh, yeah.
So it's really complicated. But all that said, I, I view this as monumental progress to help us keep moving forward. to help us keep moving forward so that we can make this place shine for what it's now become, becoming known for. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good morning, Chair and Supervisors. My name is Autumn Karsee. I'm the owner and founder of Alchemy 29, a GMP manufacturing co-packing and processing facility located in Lower Lake. I'm also the owner and operator of Artemis Farms and Wildcat Farms. The ordinance currently in place, as Sarah mentioned, was drafted prior to state regulations being adopted. It is the belief of the LCCA, the Cannabis Task Force, and many cannabis operators within the county that the current regulations need to be updated to come into alignment with the current California state regulations governing permitted cannabis operations. The proposed zoning update has a positive cost benefit, not only for operators, but also the CDD and Planning Commission. The zoning table considers when a major use permit is necessary and when a minor use permit may be most appropriate. It also introduces some much-needed additions to help vertically integrate our local industry. As an example, Alchemy 29 currently has a 20,000 square foot building onsite that we use for drying about two months out of the year for outdoor harvest activities. The rest of the year, it sits dormant. It would be advantageous for us to have the ability to use this building the remaining 10 months as a nursery when we are not drying cannabis. Through the use of tissue culture, we can successfully eliminate hop late enviroide and other systemic and pathogenic issues. Tissue culture allows us to reduce our nursery footprint versus holding mother plants year round. This initiative would not only have additional environmental, this initiative would not have any additional environmental impacts because the building is pre-existing. No power upgrades are required. And it would allow, it would assist us in keeping our current cultivation staff employed year round. It is the goal of Alchemy 29 to initiate a breeding program that may provide clean, compliant genetics to other farmers that are optimal within Lake County's various appellations. We feel that a minor use permit is appropriate in this instance. Giving applicants and operators the opportunity to amend current licenses under a minor use permit will ensure long-term successful businesses within Lake County. The Cannabis Task Force has worked diligently over the past six months with community stakeholders to develop these recommendations. And we are hopeful that we can move forward with them with your support today. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we, yes. Please state your first and last name for the record.
Yeah, my name is Lewis Lincoln. I am the owner of Red Bud Apothecary Dispensary in Kelseyville. And I just wanted to put my input on the consumption. Not all consumption is smoking. We have edibles, we have drinks. So when you consider the consumption onsite, you know, our dispensary is a standalone dispensary. There are some dispensaries that share walls with other retail that is mixed ages. Ours is a standalone one acre property. Our dispensary is only like 100 square feet big. It's very small according to the size of the property. So the outdoor space is ideal for a events licensing and all that consumption, outdoor use. We currently paid Kelseyville for a permit for cannabis events. The fire department is all on board. So just thinking, when you come to dispensaries wanting to do consumption onsite, it should be a case-by-case scenario, correct? Like, you don't have other stores mixing with all ages where, or you, you know, what's the design, the layout? And then also, we're the only store that supports, I think, local cannabis. You've allowed Cure to come in, which is a retail chain. They have four stores. And we're competing against a retail chain dispensary group coming in where they can undercut all us local farmers and dispensaries. So if you're going to be helping the, the system, think about the whole chain of it. And we are, you know, dispensaries are community-based. We have a 2,000 customer base. We've only been open six months, but we have 2,000 customers that are all local Lake County and Kelseyville residents that want to see a consumption lounge. We have 10 pages thick of signatures saying, hey, we want, we support you in the consumption lounge. And it's just more about safe access, right? You talk about people driving. Well, people walk to our store. They're not driving away. They're walking to our store. So, you know, it's, it's, and nobody consumes, they'll take it and they go home because there's nowhere to consume. Bars have, bars have someplace to consume. Lounges, you know, wineries have place to consume, you know, all these things taking consideration to what their licensing allows, right? Just broaden the licensing allowable for the cannabis industry, you know? And that, and that part too, going to that part is all these recommendations and stuff. Well, as a, as an source to the, to the consumer, you know, we're responsible for collecting all these taxes and all that now. So if you're going to expand consumption to other places, are they going to be collecting excise tax and all that again? Because before it was growers, distributors were collecting all the excise tax and submitting it. Now it's on the backs of the retailers to do that. But if the, you allow all these consumption sites to happen, now who's paying that tax? That's, that's my concern is like, because we're forced to collect all this to the consumer after everybody marks it all up, which creates higher prices. So how do we get the, the right prices, the right situation for everyone in the county? Because there's a lot of people coming in because of the growing region that are taking advantage of these, of these things. So on that, I would just like to say that, you know, Red Bud Apothecary is supported by the local businesses that want to do it. We did open our property all year to all the Kelseyville events, Pear Festival, Bacon Festival, Law Independence Day. They all used our property, which alcohol was prevalent throughout the streets with minors walking everywhere. And then we tried to have a private event and code enforcement came in saying we were selling alcohol, doing all these unfrivolous, you know, because we weren't, we didn't even do anything yet. So I'm just saying, like, taking an approach to cannabis and the regulation of it, it's, it's business and it's locally supported. We're a locally supported business. And allowing all these retail chains to come in and undercut our costs when we're trying to support the local farmers, you know, should be addressed. And think about it as a business, ag business, correct? So it's, you know, and, and the consumption wise, you know, there's a lot more alcohol accidents through Kelseyville, through all their parties than there are, you know, from my, from my knowledge of cannabis incidences. So, and on that part, like I said, the consumption, it's not all smoking. It's, you know, there are edibles, there's drinks and other things that, that don't.
So can I ask a question?
Yes.
I just, I think this is really interesting. I mean, thinking, again, comparing it to the wine business, we don't have tasting rooms for wineries that do not produce local products or locally produced or grown.
Sure.
Yeah. So am, am, am I understanding this right, that we would be allowing tasting rooms for outside producers to come in and?
Well, that's, so for retailers, I have to go through distributor. That distributor might be in SoCal. I, you know, a local distributor is only giving me my local flower. But if I need edibles, drinks, anything like that, where can I get that here in Lake County that a company makes that? So I have to order from a company that brings it a week later and they're all SoCal companies. So it's, it's, I can't just go to the farm and get, I can't just go to her and get it.
It is interesting.
So like a bar can serve whatever it wants.
Right.
And a tasting room has to serve what was estate grown usually.
I assume, but I don't know that.
It's something that can be addressed in the development standards. You know, as we go through this process, it's something we spend a lot of time talking about amongst ourselves within the industry, like what do we want to allow? And I think there, there could be support for tasting rooms focusing on Lake County products. But it's, it's, it hasn't been decided yet.
Yeah. I, well, he's bringing that up. And I think it's a really good point. And it, it needs discussion. Thank you.
Currently, use, wineries are connected, but not strictly limited to local agricultural production. The winemakers have every option to source grapes from other areas.
Yeah, but the product is produced, like Kendall Jackson, for example, might bring grapes in from Napa County to make a wine in Lake County. But you don't get a, a winery with a tasting room, they're producing the wine in a different location.
We also do have wine that is custom produced in other locations, similar to a, a number of wineries actually here use, they'll, they'll sort of co-op like a shared facility and produce their wine elsewhere and then bring it back. So there's a lot of moving parts.
And I, and I think too, on the retail side with consumption and stuff like that, it should be our responsibility to bring you mitigating responses. Like, how are you solving this? Ah, we have an Uber setup.
Mm-hmm.
Or if someone wants to drive away, or, you know what I mean? It's like, we're in the industry to make money. We have to diversify.
You'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll figure it out. We have to diversify because just people coming in and leaving is not enough. We need people to hang out, watch football. There's a ton of things that can make Kelseyville a destination spot, or any spot where dispensaries at. And partnering with the local restaurants that are right next to us because we can't serve food. So hey, we partner with local businesses.
Are you on Main Street?
We are. Yeah.
How cool.
We're right next to the Saw Shop.
Okay.
Yeah.
I saw Social Club or something.
Well, we tried to do that because there's no law, so.
I don't want to get, I don't want to get distracted, but.
Saying like, you know, that was our way of like, hey, it was private to our customer base. It wasn't, we're not on radio blasting it out. It was like an event for our customer appreciation. Because I'm not supposed to say this, but we did win best of dispensary Lake and Mendocino. But I'm just saying, creating these things for, to appreciate our, our local customer base and also serving the local farmers.
It's a ripple effect, for sure.
It is. And we're the end user, we're the, I mean, the end supplier to the consumer. And so all these have a ripple effect to us. And not, allowing us to, to operate as a business really ties our hands. You know what I mean? So, and being retired law, law enforcement from Sonoma County, I've, I was down there for 10 years as a sheriff. We didn't have problems with people coming in booking for marijuana. It was the alcohol and other drugs. So if you came in for cannabis, you got a sandwich and you sat off to the side. You know, you didn't have to go to these special, special holding cells for people.
Yeah.
And that's my.
Sweep it off.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate your, your input.
Do we have anybody else in chambers that wishes to speak? I don't see any more hands. Can we check the Zoom room?
Oh, there's two hands. William Canastras, you are now allowed to speak. Please state your name and you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is William Canastras. I'm the General Manager for Alchemy 29. Alchemy 29 is a new cultivator, distributor, processor, and manufacturer based in Lower Lake, California, managed by a team of experienced cannabis operators. Alchemy 29 is positioned to support the Lake County cannabis industry with industry-leading compliant operations across our multiple license types. It is Alchemy 29's and the LCCA's position that all Lake County cannabis businesses are negatively impacted by the absence of any cannabis nurseries operating within Lake County. We are in support of zoning updates to permit the licensing and operation of nurseries operating a tissue culture model. Negative impacts to cannabis operators and Lake County as a whole due to the lack of cannabis nurseries include loss of revenue and jobs to other counties, financial impact to cultivators related to sourcing plants and seeds from distant counties, inability of cultivators to correct early season negative impacts by sourcing replacement stock, lack of access to cultivators for hardened, for cultivars that are hardened and produce well in Lake County's microclimates, and the importation of hop late enviroide from nurseries operating counties with high-density cultivation. Hop late enviroide is estimated to have infected as much as 90% of cannabis in California, costing nearly $4 billion in lost yields to the industry. To date, Lake County has no reported cases of hop late enviroide. Current regulations will force the spread of hop late enviroide into the Lake County agricultural industry. Abatement post-infection is costly and near impossible to guarantee, causing long-lasting negative impacts. In summary, Alchemy 29 and the LCCA vehemently support the approval of zoning regulation updates and streamlining of nursery license applications in Lake County. The positive impacts to cannabis operators in Lake County as a whole hold immeasurable value to the continued development and sustainability of your, our municipalities and populace. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker?
Erin, you are now allowed to speak. Please state your first and last name and you will have three minutes.
Hello, Erin McCarrick, Clear Lake. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
She's a sister that's going out of business?
Okay. Vice President of the Lake County Cannabis Alliance. And I just want to call to give a big thank you. Sorry I couldn't be there in person. Big thank you to Moriah and Andrew, the CDD, and everybody on the Cannabis Task Force. They've done a really good job hashing this out and having open meetings that really take into account a lot of diverse opinions and input on that. So I also wanted to ask if they are, I don't know the Brown Act violate, or like regulations for planning commissioners or supervisors attending the task force, but I want to follow up to see if they are available on like a recorded way to watch them later. Because it's a really great way for, as I think Commissioner Price said, there's a lot of information here. So it's a really good way to stay up to date on what the task force is doing and what's important to the cannabis community and the community as a whole regarding the task force. So thanks again. I urge the support of this zoning administration, zoning table. Thank you so much. Bye.
Thank you, Erin. Any more hands in the Zoom room? All right, we're going to the next speaker.
Nora Dalbaka, you are now allowed to speak. Please state your name. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, or almost afternoon, members of the Planning Commission. Thank you for taking this up today. And thank you to Moriah and, and Andrew and the rest of the folks on the task force. We have some really amazing people serving with us on that task force who are giving up a lot of their time and their brain power to, to learn about this industry that is incredibly complicated and extremely regulated. You now have a, a team of about eight people in, in the county who are, who are subject matter experts in cannabis. And I just, I want to address a couple of things. There, there's a huge benefit to, to vertically integrating Lake County's cannabis industry. That benefit goes to, you know, economically into the, into the community itself by attracting cannabis tourists who will spend money in our local restaurants and shops. It also allows for the county to diversify where they're getting their, their cannabis money. As, as you've all seen over the last couple of years, we've had to make some cuts to the cannabis taxes because of the price of cannabis lowering. If cannabis farms and farmers are able to, to have incidental tasting rooms, to have incidental retail as part of their, of their licenses, that tax money goes to the county. The county gets the, the, the local taxes on the, on the retail sale as well as on the cultivation itself. And so it, it diversifies the money that comes into the county. It also allows for that money to get put directly into the farmer's pockets. We have a lot of family, mom and pops, subsistence farmers in Lake County. And, and sometimes because of the contraction and the extinction events happening around the state right now because of the, the issues at the, at the state level, farmers aren't getting paid. There are distros and there are retailers that owe distros millions of dollars. There are distros that then aren't able to pay the farmers. And, and that means that farmers aren't able to feed their kids. This allowing for farmers to have incidental retail to sell their product locally is, is a way to put money into a farmer's pocket. That's very unlikely to be the majority of their business. But it does mean that I can order from a local farm directly from that farmer and I can pay that farmer. And it also means, you know, that doesn't, it doesn't take business away from our local retailers. Because when I go to our retailers, I'm not going to, I, you know, I live in, I live in Hidden Valley Lake. I'm not going to drive all the way to Kelseyville just to go to a dispensary. But when I'm in Kelseyville, you better believe I'm hitting up those dispensaries and I'm going in and I'm seeing what kind of products they have. And I'm always thrilled to see, you know, Red Bud carrying local farms. Those are my friends. Those are my neighbors. And, and I think that it's, you know, it's time and it's fantastic that the county is choosing to embrace this. I think it's really smart economically. It allows for, for us to weather this storm. It's going to be a tough few years for cannabis. And hopefully we can get this, get this fixed at the state level and we can right this ship. But Lake County's being really smart right now and trying to, and trying to find other ways to, to monetize cannabis and to keep our local businesses afloat through a really hard time. I appreciate your thoughtful questions and I look forward to continuing the work and, and getting these development standards hammered out once we get the zoning table through. So thanks so much.
Thank you, Nora. Do we have another hand in the Zoom room? All right. No more hands in the Zoom room. I'm going to take a quick look in chambers if anybody else wishes to speak. I don't see any hands, so I will close public comment and bring it back to the commission.
So we're not making it motion. We're just, it was just for discussion, correct? Recommendations that Director Turner took down?
Yeah, the recommendations can be done by consensus or by motion.
Consensus.
So far, I only have one, which is to draft that table that compares the recommendations to similar wine uses.
Okay.
Well, that works for me. I, I get the point about more work needs to be done when we get to development standards.
Right, yeah, yeah. So you're going to?
Do we have a consensus on, kind of, yeah, recommendations?
I support it.
I support it.
Yep. I think we're all consensus for that.
It's a lot to digest, and I think that I just recommend that we digest it. I mean, that we, we consider it.
Like Director Turner said, kind of see what, after it's all sifted out, you know, what's left and what they want to pursue and, and all of that. So.
Yeah.
That's great.
I think a big effort has been made here, and as far, if, if we're being asked to, to recommend that the Board of Supervisors consider this, then I would say yes.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay, if the Commission would like to make a recommendation of approval to the Board, I, I think a motion would probably be helpful.
Well, I'm not approving it. Just, I would recommend its consideration. I am in no way ready to evaluate all of this.
So perhaps a recommendation that the recommendations, as listed, be furthered or be forwarded to the Board for their consideration.
Yeah, that would work.
I move, I move to pass the table of recommendations that we've gone over to the Board of Supervisors.
With the additional comments made here today.
With the additional comments made here today, December 14th, 2023, 10:11:41 in the morning.
Last meeting of the year.
Yeah.
I think that is very clear.
All right, do I have a second?
Do we, we need a second or, or what?
Yeah, can I, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Recommendations pass.
Thank you.
Moving on to item seven, non-timed items. I don't see anything in the agenda, so we'll go to the next, which is department update.
Well, I kind of did a spoiler alert by introducing our Principal Planner earlier on, but we are all very glad that she's joining our team. I think that this will help a lot in fixing the bottleneck that I have been regarding staff review. The staff report review remains an essential step in our process to make sure that all projects are very well-vetted and consistent and ready for your consideration before it comes to you. And, and Michelle's great at editing, so. Additionally, the only other thing I have to report is we are, are, we're going to have our seasonal celebratory all-department meeting training pretty much right after this meeting is concluded. It's a great time for all three divisions of our department to come together, celebrate what has, you know, what our achievements have been this year, and to talk about what we want to see for next year.
Are you inviting us?
Absolutely. Why don't you stop by?
I'm just kidding.
There are no subject-specific items that'll come, that will be coming for you for your consideration, so I don't see any possible conflict.
Yeah. Thank you.
And that concludes my report. I just thank you all for your year of service. It's, it's really helpful to have a Commission that dives in and really rolls around in these items and thinks about the details and questions. Thanks. So that's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Moriah.
Thanks, Sam.
Thanks, everyone, for showing up today. Everyone that had their input on Zoom, and to the Department and the Commission for a great year. So I'll adjourn this last meeting of the year at 11:43.